Good morning. We will call the meeting to order for Tuesday, September 10th, 2013. And the first item is the approval of the agenda.
Move to approve.
All in favor say aye. Motion is carried. I should mention that Commissioner Everett is out of town today and will not be with us. Next item is citizens to be heard. There are none. How about a motion to approve the payment of bills and vouchers?
You will go first.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Bills are paid. Rhonda Porter, approved contract agreement with the Improv Group for Region Four Community Mental Health Assessment Social Services Director. Rhonda Porter.
Okay.
And she has in front of us.
Yes, I just laid that in your spots this morning, so I apologize for not getting that in the board packet. But just to summarize, what this is about and what I'm requesting is our Region Four, which is our nine-county region, human service directors have been working with Lakeland Mental Health Center and West Central Initiative as well as Prime West on seeing if there would be funds available to do a nine-county mental health needs assessment in our nine-county area. And we did receive $90,000 from Lakeland Mental Health Center, $25,000 from Prime West, and we're asking for $9,000 from West Central Initiative, which we haven't heard yet from them, but we're pretty optimistic. So we are looking at working with the Improv Group, which is a research organization out of St. Paul. They actually have been an organization that has worked a lot with our state on different audits and reviews in the state. In fact, they were just here and did our Medicaid waiver review about a month ago. And so we wanted to contract with the Improv Group to conduct this region-wide mental health assessment for adults and children. I had indicated that I had volunteered for Clay County to be the fiscal host of the board group of the grant funds and to be the liaison on behalf of our Region Four. So what this is, is a contract agreement with the Improv Group to conduct the assessment. And you'll notice on the top, on the second page, at the top, it's listed as Clay County on behalf of Region Four Human Service Agencies. The, yeah, second page of that document there. So in talking with Jenny, the piece that I wasn't quite sure about is whether all of our nine counties would need to sign this agreement, or if Clay County could sign it on behalf of all nine of us, or what would be the best protocol. And it sounds like either we will have all of the nine counties sign this agreement, or Clay County could sign it, and then I could work on a memorandum of understanding with the other eight counties. We have been meeting with the Improv Group in our nine counties, and we're ready to get started. We've done a little bit of preliminary work, so we're hoping that you would approve this agreement today.
Jenny, do you have anything to add?
Just that I have reviewed it. Rhonda had sent it to me. I reviewed it. And the one issue that I felt in speaking with Rhonda was the signature of the other counties. It's great that Clay County's volunteered to do the kind of hosting of this project, but we should have something amongst the counties that sets forth the agreement so that, you know, should something happen, unfortunately, we're not the only ones left holding the liability. So.
If we pass this today, will that be the understanding that the other counties will sign it? Contingent upon that.
I would think we should make it contingent on either the other counties signing it or having a memorandum of understanding amongst the counties that defines the duties and responsibilities of the group as a whole.
Discussion that we come to, Kevin?
Yeah, I want to go back to understanding the intent.
Okay.
I like to know what it is we're doing. So apparently, the goal is to look at the community health needs as a region. Is that what this really is?
Well, it's to look at the mental health.
Yeah, that's what I meant, the mental health. So, I mean, because we do mental health assessments all the time.
We do.
Within our county right now. So this expands that to find out some areas that maybe we're missing? Is that what?
Correct. And maybe I'll just back up a little bit about how this started. I serve on the Lakeland Mental Health Center Board of Directors as well. And one of the things that Lakeland did, which was new this year, is they developed what's called an opportunity fund. And it was basically funds that they had set aside for Lakeland to work with the member counties to look at unmet needs in their counties, look at areas where counties could work together for efficiencies in terms of delivering mental health services. So one of the things that then, as we sat down as a region with Lakeland, and we are, you've heard of BCAU, our Becker, Clay, Ottertail, Wilken, adult mental health initiative. And then the southern five counties have Region Four South Mental Health Initiative. And so while this conversation was occurring with Lakeland, our mental health initiatives were also talking about how we might be able to work together in different ways, streamline some services, look at building regional capacity for mental health services. So it, the idea came about as we were talking about the needs. There's all different services in all of our nine counties. We do some things different. Some counties are lacking in certain services. Some counties are rich in certain services. And so we talked about really getting a really good assessment of where we're at, what is our service level, what are the barriers that exist in each of our counties? And from all of that and collecting all of the different assessments that have already been conducted, where would our recommendations be to start streamlining or building capacity to meet the needs of adults and kids? So that's kind of how it unfolded, and that's where the money came from, from Lakeland. So our idea went back to the Lakeland Board to ask them if they felt that this would be an appropriate use of the dollars, some of the dollars that they set aside. And they had approved utilizing those funds at that point. And then from there, we really talked about the investment of Prime West as well as West Central and this kind of fits with some of the work that they've been doing. And they've decided to, or at least Prime West at this point, decided that they would provide some additional funds.
Well, I certainly commend those efforts in terms of all these different counties looking together at better ways to serve the public. That's always a good deal. Is there going to be anything done in this in looking at where we're at with mental health and how it affects our correctional facilities? Is that part of this?
One of the things we did do at our last meeting is we talked about where are the areas we really want to see some focus and some concerns that are consistent across the counties? And that was one of them, mental health services in the jail, mental health for corrections individuals. So that is on one of our lists of areas we want to target.
I think that goes to, you know, we certainly, you know, if you talk to our Sheriff's Department, our jail staff, I think, and even your department, we all know that there's certain things that are happening that are, from a mental health standpoint, that are putting people in these facilities.
Oh, absolutely.
And that in itself is also very costly to our county. So anything that we can do to try to come up with better solutions to that, I think, is a step forward.
Yeah, absolutely. I think that that came out as high on the list as well as also focusing on, you know, as we see some of our demographics change and the elderly in our community, how are we serving the mental health needs of our elderly and what kinds of services might we need to target now and in the future? So we're looking at some of that demographic piece as well in terms of where we may need to go with our services.
Thank you, Rhonda.
Is this agreement in effect already because it says the 28th of August?
Well, we actually have met with the Improv Group. They've started some pieces of work. We've been trying to hash out the details of the contracts. So of course, if this didn't go further, we would stop what we're doing, but they have started some of their work.
Do you have a motion? Contingent upon the.
I'm going to go approve with that.
Okay.
Contingent. Second.
Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
You got it, Rhonda.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Overbaugh, you are on. Request to offer six and seven axle permits to private growers. Good morning, Dave.
Morning. Back in August of 2009, Trans Systems was pushing for these six and segment axle permits, and I think that was about the time the state started selling them. And at the time, no other growers really had trucks configured this way. So I brought it to the board with my support and recommended that we offer this permit to Trans Systems only, kind of based on a couple of things. One, they were the only ones that were doing it. And two, they actually had their trucks configured, and it was kind of a trial thing a little bit to see how our roads would react with this kind of a truck configuration. And since then, we've had one or two growers mention, you know, that they'd like to do this too. Recent legislation this past year is there's been some more talk about six and seven axle permits being more of a norm within the state's permit system as well. So I guess I would, I talked to Polk County up north of us, and he does sell these to private individuals as well. So I thought, you know, it doesn't really seem fair to not sell it to anyone else as well. And, you know, I think the truck industry's changed a lot in the last 10 years. Everything used to be five axle, seventy-three thousand, two eighty. Now they've changed the law. Any paved road is automatically eighty thousand pound kind of a max. So everyone's got all kinds of the lift axles, and you hardly see a five axle truck anymore. So I guess I don't really have a lot of fear in selling this to private individuals. So I thought we would maybe recommend maybe doing the same thing if anybody does come forward. At this time, I've only got one individual, but we might see more down the road, I guess. So if they want to configure a longer trailer with more axles to haul more weight, which would then reduce the amount of trips that they haul, you know, it's kind of a, it's kind of a good reason in that way, too. They actually have less trips that they haul, having less damage on your roads.
Any comments?
You know, I think this goes to the AMC Highway, our Transportation Committee. I think this has been a topic of discussion and research for quite some time about expanded weights with additional axles. And I think that the jury's probably still out on the outcome of that, but I know there are certainly strong proponents to do that. It just, it just makes sense to me, at least from this standpoint, to allow our ag producers, our growers, to use this method. You know, I think you, as a highway engineer, you kind of feel it would, it could be done without damage to these roads.
Correct.
Right?
Absolutely.
You got a little more weight, but you're also redistributing that.
Exactly.
Weight a lot more, right?
Exactly right, yeah. It's distributed over more axles and a longer bridge, which has less down pressure on your roadway, and then less trips, like I mentioned before. So it is a good thing.
Comments?
Well, yes, I support this too, because I've had one person call me. I don't know if it's the same person that you've got or not, you know, but I'm making a motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Dave?
With regard to that legislation, I think next week, we're going to be meeting with a lobbyist group that wants to come to town to talk about this a little bit. So Brian and I, and I think John Everett are going to meet just to, they want to get our position on things. And the one thing that they wrote in the language that's kind of a little goofy, you know, a lot of it makes sense, but they made it sound like this, you know, they're trying to push, instead of having eighty thousand pound be the norm, they're trying to push six axle ninety thousand, seven axle ninety-seven thousand. But the funny thing on there is it says only on paved roadways. And if, you know, anybody knows, most of our stuff doesn't always come off a paved roadway, almost very little.
Yeah, you get to the paved road.
Yeah, yeah, very, very low. It comes straight out of a field onto a paved roadway. So I know that was one thing that our County Engineers Association thought was a little messed up. I don't know why they wrote it that way.
So are they, Dave or who's?
It's that Lockridge Grindle, I think it is. And I get these, I don't know how I got on their email broadcast, you know, but I know they do a lot of lobbying in DC, and they've got an office, I think, in St. Paul as well.
So does federal highways, does that, is that already allowed on the interstates?
I don't think, not on Minnesota's interstates. For some reason, they've kept theirs at eighty thousand pounds. And then if you go over eighty, you've got to have a special single move type of.
So that's probably what the real underlying deal they see here is to get this.
Could very well be. Yeah, I don't know. Like I said, I, they've never talked to me. I've never been approached by these people. And all of a sudden, about maybe three weeks ago, they had asked all of us, they wanted to meet and get our opinion. So I, to me, I was just kind of wanting to hear what they have to say.
Good. Dave?
Yeah, thank you.
And Mr. Chair, please.
The reason why Dave brought that up is, obviously, you're not available. You're in my.
I don't know yet.
Oh, okay, okay. Because Commissioner Everett is going to meet with us on that Wednesday as well, and that's next Wednesday at Usher's, and there would be room for one more of the commissioners and if there is, if there is a desire by him. So if there is, he could let us know. And of course, I think Commissioner Campbell was considering it with schedules. Thank you.
That's the 18th?
Seventeenth, I believe, isn't it? Yes, seventeenth.
Well, that's Tuesday. Okay.
I thought that was Wednesday, but it's Tuesday. Yeah, you're right.
We have a highway tracking committee that morning after the meeting, don't we?
I guess I had the 24th on Mike Donner.
No, we have the correctional facility.
I know, I thought we had both, okay.
Oh, no. Yeah, it's at noon.
Learning something?
It's Tuesday.
I have correctional facility at 10:30 next Tuesday.
Yep.
Okay. And then highway trackings.
I have the 24th. Yes, that's correct.
Okay. I guess I had them both days. I wonder if that's what I had put down, is that highway track, highway tracking for that purpose of meeting with that outfit? So is it Tuesday or Wednesday?
Tuesday.
At noon?
At noon.
Thank you, Dave. This time, we'll go through committee reports, and Kevin, you are first.
Gee, I just had, I just had one meeting last week, I believe, and that was the Oak Clay County Joint Powers Board met, and just the primary topic was getting ready for the intergovernmental retreat. And we had, we've had quite a few topics in mind. I think one of the topics, Grant, is going to be trails and how that can, what kind of an economic impact that can be and why we should be supporting the trail efforts all the way into all of Clay County and from Moorhead to the Buffalo State Park. So, and I suggested that you'd be a good person to potentially be on that panel. So I, so hopefully, they'll contact you regarding that. Then there were several other ideas, and I know there was some strong talk about trying to maybe, was it the demographer that we're going to maybe look at getting to do the keynote? Is that, Brian, was that, am I correct on that?
Yes, Commissioner Campbell, that was, because they talked about the diversity that's in the school systems and throughout the county.
Right. And then there's going to be a, you know, an education component to this one, a little bit stronger than what it's been in the past, too. So, but it was, looked like it was lining up to be a pretty good retreat, so that's all I had.
Chief?
Let's see, I had a couple Heartland Trail meetings last week, and speaking of trails, and we, at one of the meetings, Senator Eakin and Representative Mark Horton Lee and were there, and actually starting to look fairly promising. It's a bonding year, and they all seemed fairly positive that we're going to have a chance at some bonding money to start working on our end of the project and in Detroit Lakes. So I think there was, at this point, $3.1 million submitted for bonding, and $100,000 is for our end of the project to, you know, start getting things going and done. And then the $3 million would be to complete the trail from Detroit Lakes to Freyzee. And they were, they were all pretty positive that we have a pretty good, pretty good shot at that. So that was encouraging. And, and let's see, I had an MRCC meeting in Alexandria, and one of the topics of discussion was this county-state aid highway funding issue. And I provided what the, there's been a task force that AMC had put together, and they've got a recommendation, and it's a compromise policy, but I think everybody seemed to be in agreement that that was the best way to get something positive done for greater Minnesota on these road issues. Then the other discussion was, you know, some of the things that MRCC has done the last few years with the trails and vulnerable adults and children, funding and some of those things, they've been pretty successful at. We need to get more of the rural counties involved in the organization, help fund some of these things, and find a way to free up more time for the lobbyists to actually do the work rather than administrative work. So there's going to be a push to get more counties involved, and there hasn't been an increase in the dues for years with MRCC, so they're looking at possibly a $500 increase in the dues for that organization. And let's see, yesterday, we kind of had a law librarian meeting, so, and that things are going well there. We've got a new law librarian, Crystal Bob Burton, and so we seem to switch about, oh, every, every year, we get a new law librarian because they're students and they move on once they finish school. So I think everything is going fine there. And last night, Brian and I went to the Buffalo Red Board meeting in Barnesville, and they did approve the joint powers amended agreement, and so that was, that was a good thing. I, I think Brian will talk about that sometime. He did a good job speaking to the issue, and I think it was, I think, pretty positive overall, so. That's it for me.
Frank?
Last Friday, you and I were at the Liberty Bell into this place. It looks like a pretty nice addition down there, and I know it's supposed to be here around two years, but it's a good addition to the courthouse down there. It's a good, it's a, it was great to listen to Ardine talk about how he built that thing and stuff like that. That is a work of art down there. It's just, it's not just a Liberty Bell, it's a work of art. Last night, I went to Felton, the city council meeting down there, and it's interesting as you go to these, the smaller cities, you know, some of these people that are involved in the stuff, you know, they make a motion or something that needs something done, they're the ones that do it, you know? And it's just, it's different than some of these other towns where, well, the maintenance will go out there, or the, these people will go out there and do it, you know? It's great, it's just interesting to see how involved those people are in running Felton, you know? It's just, there's a very good meeting there. And just some upcoming stuff, I was going to remind you, the council, Metro, all of the council governments, they've got three meetings this week, intend to either one. And the soil and water conservation districts have a tour on Thursday, starts out of American Leach and Moorhead at eight o'clock. That's it.
I was not able to get to the joint powers meeting, but I did have, I'm at the local advisory council of children's mental health. It was the first meeting of the year, general business, and there were several agency reports and updates, and the meeting went very well. It was quite well-attended. And on Tuesday, September 3rd, the Moore Planning Commission, there was general business, and then reacted on a plat for the city of Moore in the area of 34th Avenue and 41st Street South, which will be sent on to the city council. Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We had management team meeting last week, and we continually stress and have some training every month in regards to customer service, because at our retreat last winter, we had three goals, and one of them was to expand and continue training in customer service and expand on that. And I just wanted to assure you that we continually push for that and encourage the departments to do that internally as well. We feel that the follow-up on calls and good customer service is something that, even though, you know, we think we're, we're good at it, we need to be better. We always need to be better in customer service, and we will continue to strive for that. We did have a meeting last week in regards to the surveyor, and Jenny, we said we'd discuss that a little bit at the, at the, just the general update session here. And what we're hoping to do, and please feel free, Jenny, to jump in here at any time, but what we would like is probably to ask maybe the chair to appoint a commissioner or two to meet with us in regards to that, because we would like to tell you what we found out, and we would like to maybe with that committee, have a recommendation to bring to the board, because there's some things we want to discuss, maybe outside of the board meeting, to get some, some feeling as to where you folks want to go with that. So.
And this stems from Commissioner Everett had had some concerns, probably six weeks ago or so, asked me to follow up on some issues, and I've done that, gotten some answers, legal answers, but the question is, where do we go with that realistically? And so I think that will take some.
Discussion.
Discussion, and I would appreciate having a commissioner or two present to provide their input and also maybe understand what's, what's at the heart of the issue here.
Right. So at some point in time, and I'm assuming Commissioner Everett has seemed to be very interested in the direction we want to go, so maybe we can ask for that in the future, but we, I said I'd bring you guys up to date after our meeting on it. So maybe we can ask for that later on, so. But that's, I think, I think it's gone really well. Jenny's done a lot of work, and we're pleased with what we're finding out, and we want to find out a direction where you folks would like to go with it. Yeah, I think I attended the joint powers meeting last week, too. I think it wasn't a real heavy agenda, but it turned out to be a good meeting with good discussion and the direction from trails to demographics to the retreat and on and on. So just, it was really nice to see commissioners make it to that Liberty Bell dedication downstairs. Ardine Swenson is the artist. You talk about displaying local talent and local art. Boy, if that isn't local art, I don't know what is. It's just magnificent piece, over 200 pieces of wood glued together, make that bell in there. That is, that's really something. And then to visit with them about it was really, really something as well. So we did really wanted to encourage the people that are watching here to stop by the lobby and take a look at that and read a little bit of the history of it and things. That was really something else, I think. Yeah, we did, Commissioner Rayland and I attended the Buffalo Red Watershed meeting last night, and they did pass the joint meeting. They certainly had some discussion, as every board has had, and we shared with him that even our board, you know, has concerns of how this develops and what goes first and things like that, and that the biggest, most important thing. And that the biggest, most important thing to be is a part of that in order to shape it in the direction and protect the interests of the, of the people that it affects the most. And, you know, some of the comments were that, well, you know, they represent people down in that region and they have concerns, and we agreed that there are concerns. And they need to be negotiated out, and the best way to have a fair settlement is to be part of that. And that's what they decided to do. So, it was any unanimous support for it, so, which was a real positive thing, we thought. I, last Friday, had the administrative diversion project meeting, and we talked over some task forces and some updates on the hardship cases and what the outreach was doing and the joint powers agreement and the financing of it and different things. So, we had a good discussion there. Also, I'll be attending the metro cog, that's tomorrow morning, I think. They have their, I don't want to even say annual review, but it's a, it's a, what about a 10 or 15-year strategic planning session that they're looking for in Port... That'll be a couple hours tomorrow morning over at Fargo City Hall, if any of you are interested in attending that. And I think there was one other item to follow up on from another meeting, yeah, the business subsidy policy. Vicki has been able to coordinate a meeting date, I think October 15th for that. So, we will look at some things and get an agenda together for that meeting and look at those points that they brought in and go from there. So, I think that's about it, Mr. Chair.
Jenny?
I just had one comment. Commissioner Whalen talked about the law library meeting, and we didn't have a quorum, so we weren't able to dig into our agenda yesterday. However, I wanted the commissioners to be aware that we do have now a west law legal research terminal in the Clay County Jail. And that was an action that the board approved and acted on at the last meeting. But we are one of the first in the state, and we're going to be putting out a press release here within the next couple of weeks. It's a pretty, pretty special thing, what we're doing with the funds that the law library board takes in from the public, and we're providing that back to the inmates at the jail to further their legal needs there. So, we didn't talk about it at the meeting because we couldn't get into the agenda, but that has happened. And if you see a press release in the next couple of weeks, just wanted you to be aware of that, so.
Mr. Chair, just one additional thing, and the Commissioner Campbell's question or
comments to Ms. Porter when she was here regards to the mental health issues, it's kind of funny how sequential that file in because yesterday morning, Sheriff Bill Burquist sent me a video and information that the sheriff from Hennepin County was making some statements in regards to warehousing our mentally ill. And he said, you know, there's got to be another way. He said, they're just pushing them on to the sheriff, and it's not my responsibility to warehouse mentally ill, and that's what's taking place. And my response was, yes, that's what we've done since the beginning of time, is warehouse our mentally ill. And unfortunately, when they commit crimes, that's what we do with them rather than treat them. And, you know, maybe none of us have a better, better way of looking at it, but we should continually look at a better way of doing it. And frankly, we have another, our second financial planning session for a new correctional facility. And maybe, just maybe, when that gets time to build that in future years, maybe that will be a stronger consideration as how we treat and handle the adult mentally ill that are committing crimes. So, it's an interesting topic. Been around forever.
It's like Jim Mulder, executive from AMC years ago, said we've got to understand the difference between who we're afraid of and who we're mad at.
That's right.
Yeah, when it comes to correctional facilities. And I think sometimes we're spending an awful lot of money on areas where, is there an alternative that's better?
Right.
We're adjourned.